I will call this meeting to order. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Dave Bardot.
Here.
Gabby Braun.
Here.
Jill Matic Nelson.
Here.
Kristen Mattmiller.
Here.
Scott Peterson.
Here.
Catherine Solan.
Here.
Angie Schreiber.
Here.
Jada Schrader. Danny Pyatt.
Here.
Letter D is public comment. All right. The presiding officer of each board meeting shall, at which public comment is permitted, administer the rules of the board for its conduct. The presiding officer shall be guided by the following rules. Public comment shall be permitted before the board takes official action on any issue of substance. Attendees must register their intention to comment in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting. Comments made by the public shall be civil in content and tone, affirming the decorum established for school board meeting by the school board. Disparaging comments, remarks about school board members, employees, students, positions, position titles, and or district citizens shall not be permitted. Comments made by the public shall be in reference to a specific agenda item. Participants be recognized by the presiding officer and will be required to preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes in which we will have a time clock on the screen. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Participants shall address only topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The presiding officer may interrupt, warrant, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Request an individual to leave the meeting when the person does not observe reasonable decorum. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. Call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. Portion of meeting during which the comment of the public is invited to shall be limited to 60 minutes unless extended by a vote of the board. And we have one person signed up, and that's Pete Lewandowski. Sorry, Pete, to go through all of those.
That's okay. I hope that was formality because you were worried about what I'm going to say. My name is Pete Lewandowski. I've been educator in this community and resident of the community for 34 years. I want to thank you first for the steps in compensation that you made to retain veteran staff last year. That was greatly appreciated. Did not realize, however, that some of us would be penalized for longevity this year. I'm not here to try to negotiate my own contract, but rather speak for a small group of us who have been loyal to this district for the longest. As one of a handful of staff members that are currently frozen on the salary schedule, I'd like to remind you that what you are proposing for some of your most committed veteran staff is inconsistent and inequitable with the rest of the salary schedule. You are proposing that those of us currently frozen at the top of Lane Eight, because you have not added another lane, should receive approximately 40% of what they would receive at the top of any other lane instead of adding a ninth lane and being equitable. For example, a teacher who was hired three years ago at the very bottom of the salary schedule, most likely fresh out of college with no experience or perhaps not even licensed, will receive two and a half times the raise that you're offering me after 34 years. That does not come across to me as equitable or appreciation for the years of commitment to my profession or this community. In a conversation with the superintendent, she made a comment that resonated with me. She said, "People don't leave positions. People leave people." As I've thought about that more, I would completely agree. I think a lot of staff have left because people have made them feel undervalued and underappreciated. Yes, people leave for more money, but true teachers don't join the profession to become wealthy. They do it for the most important people, the students. It's sad that teachers feel so unappreciated that they're willing to leave our students. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. And by the way, that was formality, just to give you a heads up. Thank you so much. Come on in, gentlemen. Item number two, consent agenda. Approval of agenda, minutes, and financial reports, requests for overnight travel, report of district retirements and resignations, and report of district new hires. I will be looking for a motion, and I want to remind the board members to clearly speak into your microphones if they're away from you or standing straight up. Be sure to bring them to you.
I move the board approve the agenda, minutes from the May 20, 2024 Board of Education meeting, June committee meeting minutes, district retirement and resignation report, report of district new hires, financial reports for May and June 2024, consideration of current bills, checks number 8032 through 8073 in the amount of $557,448.87. ACH is numbers 232401268 through 232401343 in the amount of $1,507,458.25 in wire transfers in the amount of $9,905.22 for a total of $2,074,812.34.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Any discussion of the motion on the floor?
I have one question on the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Minutes from the last board meeting. And I'm not sure if this is appropriate request, but the director reports under administrative reports, Director of Business Services, Pupil Services, Fed. It just says to see topic summary sheet for more details. And I feel that if these minutes are published for the public to read, I'm wondering if the topic summary sheet is available for them or if they should be provided with a bit more detail.
The topic summary sheet would be included with the minutes as they're posted.
As they're published in the paper?
Yeah, they should be, yes.
Okay. Well, if not, I would ask that there be more detail to the minutes.
Absolutely. Agreed. Any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor?
I guess I have a question. Was there a June policy meeting? Because we have a first reading of policy change for the.
No, that came through a committee on June the 3rd.
On June 3rd?
Yes.
There was a policy committee meeting?
No, there was not a policy committee meeting. It came through a respective committee that that policy fit under. So, policy committee will meet when the Neola, the big changes in Neola.
Okay.
Or if there's other big changes that need to take place. If not, the administrators will take care of what policies affect their department in the district.
Okay, and then that will go to that committee?
Yes, it'll go to that committee, yes.
Okay, all right.
Great question. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. The voting device is now open for the motion on the floor. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, Dustin, and the motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, administration reports. And I will turn this item over to our district superintendent, Mrs. Oginski.
Thank you. Item A, the Director of Business Services, the report is attached, and Mrs. Fossbender is present if anyone has questions. Item B, Director of Pupil Services and Special Education Report is attached, and Mrs. Burkhan is present if anyone has further questions. Item C, Director of Curriculum and Instruction Report is attached, and Ms. Stutzrem is available if you have further questions.
Can I just make, I just want to make sure that everyone's on there. We are vetting a new math program for curriculum. I know we've had questions in the past, so that all that information is there if anyone wants to follow along with that.
Thank you. Good point. Anyone have questions? Letter D, Director of Buildings and Grounds, the report is attached, and Mr. Leiderman is present if anyone has further questions.
I just want to mention that we're going to be getting the survey update presentation presented to us and the task force on June.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yes, next Monday.
And it will be recorded.
Okay.
And available on YouTube the following day.
It's right here.
Yes, yes. Okay, item E, I am unsure what I should do about this one because the wrong report is attached. I have my report, and I don't know if I can read it.
It's on there now. Amy.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, so for my superintendent report, I spent some time doing technical updates because some of our policies were behind, and we have been working with our Neola rep, Tim, to get everything cleaned up and make sure that we have all of the updated policies from Neola in our policy manual. And he is helping us to look at what we don't have and to bring that back to the board if something isn't present. So, I've spent quite a bit of time with that. And just to let you know, the technical updates have been changing pronouns or instead of the Board of Education, the board. Those are the types of technical updates which I'm authorized to do by board policy. So, just letting you know that I did just complete Volume 33-1 and Volume 32-2. And again, we have been very busy with conducting interviews and getting together interview committees to fill open positions that we have. And we're still seeing good quality candidates, which is exciting. And then surveys, we had an update from the Donovan Group about our surveys. And we had, well, as of today, we had 580 completed. My report says 500. That was as of Friday. So, we're continuing to push things out. Angie has been a real trooper in trying to get the message out anywhere that she can to people. Mr. Leiderman has hand-delivered to homes surveys that people have reached out to central office and left me messages that they didn't have access to a computer so that we are delivering them, hand-delivering them to their doors so that we can get their input. So, we have a goal of between 600 and 900. And as Angie said earlier, we will be receiving a presentation from Perry with the Donovan Group to talk about surveys and our results, which will be next Monday night here at the high school. Do you have questions? Okay, that's all I have.
I would also like to say with Mrs. Oginski, thank you to board member Angie Schreiber for all of the extra work that she has put into the task force. She has put in countless hours and lots of time and energy in trying to get the community on board with this survey. So, thank you so much, Angie, for all your hard work. Item number four, board action.
Oh, can I ask a question about the survey? Did the board, I just missed so many meetings when I was planting. Did we, did we look at the questions or did the Donovan Group kind of just put them together in administration or?
There were several people who provided input and feedback on the surveys. That's a good question. I think Danny was part of that, Angie was, maybe some of our task force members and central office administration as well. And then two or three members of the Donovan Group were part of that work.
Yes.
Oh, yes, PMA, that's correct.
Okay, moving to four, board action. Letter A, first reading of Policy 2340, District Sponsored Trips. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the first reading of Policy 2340, District Sponsored Trips.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, this is the one that was brought to curriculum and instruction. And you can see on the attachment, it's underlined, it's adding a sentence because the current policy doesn't reflect for things like regional, sectionals, and state in addition to the location of where those events would be held.
Any questions or discussion of the motion on the floor to have the first reading of this policy? Any questions or discussion? Okay, the voting device is now open. This is the motion to approve the first reading of Policy 2340 of District Sponsored Trips. Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Letter B, Skills USA National Skills Leadership Conference, I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the Skills USA National Skills Leadership Conference trip to Atlanta, Georgia from June 23rd, 2024 to June 29th, 2024.
Motion has been made by Kristen. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just congratulations and represent us well.
Are there any questions of the motion on the floor?
I will echo what Kristen said. Sorry, couldn't get the motion up quick enough. Congratulations and best of luck. Very proud of you.
Mackenzie, I'm going to ask, because you did a great job presenting to the committee, and some of the board members was not able to be present at that committee level. Can you come and just give a highlight overview of what this is involving with you? And we're very proud of you extremely.
As in like the competition I'll be doing or nationals?
The competition, the nationals, the whole scoop of what you did. And Mr. Prezek, you can come down too if you'd like.
He might stay hiding up there.
He's going to stay hiding.
He just handles the money.
Yeah, that's right.
He brings it along for talking. So, for anyone who doesn't know, Skills USA is a nationwide organization that works to prepare individuals to go into the skilled workforce and works to close the skills gap that faces our country. We specialize in over 183 competition types. I myself do the First Aid CPR competition. I go in and take a 50-question multiple-choice test and then am given five random scenarios where I'm not, no one's allowed to know ahead of time, and then you must act on and you are scored on things you do, things you don't do, obtaining consent, making sure you're seen as safe, providing proper care, dismissing people. So, going down to nationals, I had to place in a district event. I had to place in a regional event and obtain a gold medal at the state conference, which I was able to do for the third year in a row. Going down to nationals, it's a week long in Atlanta, Georgia. They block off, it's the, I think it's about a mile surrounding the Olympic Park down there where they host festivities for us to do. We'll do things like patroning, paid trading, as well as, I wore this shirt today. We do community service events while we're down there. Some groups deliver pizza. One we've been very fortunate to do is we went and assembled over 500 bikes for the local children in the area who are not fortunate enough to get one. And what was really cool is they brought all the kids in at the end to come grab their bikes after we had assembled them all. But you get to build a sense of community while you're down there, engage with other youth going into the skilled force. You get to see other participants as well as the college level that some schools do carry into this. I'm thinking about starting a chapter in my college if I have the time. Got to get through some other stuff first. If you go down there, and I'll be able to contest against and form relationships with people from Guam, Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, all over the nation, as well as hundreds of industry partners, including ones in the medical field. Anybody got any questions?
What's an example of like the kinds of questions they ask you? Is it like broken legs or strokes or is it?
So, the tests can be on anything that you are taught during your certification. So, you will cover adult, child, infant, CPR, choking, conscious and unconscious, use of AED, burns in the first, second, third degree, sprains, strains, fractures, dislocations. You will do strokes, you'll do diabetic emergencies, you'll do seizures, heart attacks. And one that got added to it was drug overdose. So, now we are now certified to deliver Narcan. I know that was one at state, that was a situation that I had to do. Someone had overdosed at a party and had to find the Narcan and administer it and then monitor symptoms afterwards, as well as minor, major cuts, all the way up into tourniquet level.
Cool. Pressing, cool.
Any other questions?
Knock them dead again.
Try and keep them alive.
I know. All right, thank you for representing us well in Anago.
Of course, thank you guys.
And Mr. Prezek will take care of the money side for you. Letter C, professional development plan, I will be looking for a motion, please.
I think we need to vote.
Yeah, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was so excited listening. Thank you for keeping me in line here. All right, motion on the floor. Any other discussion or questions? The voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? And the vote is now closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we will move to letter C, professional development plan, I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve Solution Tree Professional Development for the Anago Middle School and Anago High School in the amount of $92,649.70 for the 2024-2025 school year.
Motion has been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
So, this came in after the committee meetings with the contract for professional development days for the upcoming school year. So, it was, couldn't be brought to committee because we didn't have the information at the time, but would require board vote before next meeting in order to submit the contract.
Correct. Yes, Mrs. Oginski, can I add to that?
Okay, so just to add some information to that, and Ms. Stutzrem is also available for further questions. This professional development is very high level, and it's some of the same work that was started when Dr. Childs was here. I'm not sure if everybody remembers when he was here. And then Dr. Tim also continued on with that work. But it's through Solution Tree, and it will be primarily for our middle school and high school staff, and it's focusing on building culture and climate for all, not just the staff, but for students as well to help promote and build that community, the sense of community through also using PLCs. And it's a great opportunity, and we will have some very highly sought-after speakers who will be coming to the district. And I hope that those of you that are able can join us for those guest speakers. Anthony Muhammad is one, and he's known about, you know, changing and creating a culture of change for numerous schools across the nation. And Luis Cruz will also be joining us as well. And I just want to be real clear that everybody understands this is being paid for out of remaining ESER funds. So, that money has to be used before September, and it can't go, there are certain guidelines around what you can do with it. So, just to be sure that everybody does understand that, that it is coming from ESER funds because it is a larger-than-typical amount for professional development. But it's a great opportunity, and we have even had brief conversation, nothing written in stone, around possibly offering to some of the smaller surrounding districts to pay to come and join the keynote speakers of Anthony Muhammad and Luis Cruz, which could potentially offset some of that. But again, that's way early in the conversation.
Any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor? Angie?
I guess are all staff required to attend these?
Yes, it's for support staff, teaching staff. It involves everyone.
Okay, so, but they are required?
Yes, yes, our professional development days are required.
Okay.
Yep.
My other question is, did we go through a company in the prior years to be?
The work, that's a good question. The work that was started with Dr. Childs was through Solution Tree. And we would attend, like the PLC Institute, we went to Minnesota to, and so then there was hotel cost and meal cost and travel, and all of that involved some additional expenses. Whereas, we're going to be able to bring them to us to help do this work. And it will be job-embedded coaching. So, they'll be here throughout the entire school year, working with staff and going into the classrooms and providing feedback and helping us to improve our practices. So, it's very high-level professional development. And so, it is through the same company, yeah, Solution Tree.
Okay, thank you.
So, what do we normally spend a year on?
Well, it depends. When we first started, there were a lot of things that we did away with, and I feel like it was somewhere along the tune of like $200 and some thousand dollars, and that was just from our local CSA nine.
So, is there a cost that we will not be charged for through CSA nine that if we're utilizing?
That was, that was what had been secured for this year. And so, right in the beginning, we eliminated that, so we weren't charged for that.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions on the motion on the floor? I did this afternoon go through the testimonials, and I was impressed by the schools that the testimonials that are listed there of the quick results, the turnaround. That was amazing to see just within the first year of this, these companies coming in and helping the districts, what a great turnaround. I mean, the very first one, the video of ensuring that all students can succeed, that was a very touching video. It's not very long. I'd suggest that you watch it if you have not watched that yet because it was a turnaround of the schools in the bottom of their state. I mean, the very last school in their state. You can help me, Amy, with this. The testing was done early, was 25%, and then at the end of the year was 94%. So, that, just in that one year, what a great turnaround.
And the reduction of kids dropping out. So, one of them is.
Absolutely.
They were a drop-out school. They were known for that in the community. You send your kids here, they drop out, we don't pass them. That was kind of the culture that was built in that school and that community, and it completely altered the whole community as well about around the school system of making sure that we succeed and then sending our kids to the workforce, to college, tech schools, and making that a priority.
Wasn't it 240 of the 260 students was not eligible at the beginning to graduate, but then later came through and did graduate? That was awesome.
Are those videos able to be used, I guess publicly, if you will?
Yes, yes, they use them in their training. I put them on here. You can go on the website on Solution Tree and kind of search around, but you can use those publicly.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing no questions or discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Letter D, Malleat Bus Company Contract, I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the 2024-2025 school year bus rates as presented.
Motion has been made by Catherine. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just that this was brought before the finance committee last week, and this is standard operating procedure to push this contract through.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor? Any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor?
This was asked already, but I just want to verify. We don't have an approximate or anticipated additional cost with Shepherd's Watch. That's what I thought, because we don't know enrollment numbers, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion of the motion on the floor? Hearing none, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Letter E, pickleball, I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the Langley County Pickleball Club to seek donations and offer naming rights as presented.
Motion has been made by Catherine. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Jake's going to speak to my motion.
She's going to defer to Mr. Leidman.
So the project that you approved a month ago is well underway, they're doing a great job, they got a lot of stuff going. If you remember, they had secured funding through donations, no cost to the district to get the bare minimum done, to get those courts in playing condition, but they also had a list of items that they were hoping to continue to fundraise for and then be able to do additionally to the base project, so they have been working effortlessly on that and they have secured a number of donors and they asked if there was a way that they could kind of mimic what we did with the Ellison Tennis Courts where the whole complex was named after one donor for a large amount of donation and then each court was also named for exchange of donation, so I brought that to the committee, explained that that was the wishes that they wanted to do and per the policy, it states that the people wishing to exercise this practice should come to the board and explain what the situation is and ask for permission, so Shane Krieger is the, kind of the head of this whole renovation down there, he's been doing a great job, so he's here just to describe a little bit what he has so far, donation amounts and what he's asking for naming rights for.
Okay, Mr. Krieger?
Thank you. So, so far, we've raised a hundred and six thousand without naming anything through some grants and a Broad Fry, a GoFundMe, a bunch of pickleball players throwing some money in the hats, so we almost have enough for the blacktop, but we're finding that there's other steps of this we should do right away, we're thinking about doing it in phases and we find that it's not recommended to do that, that we should do quite a few steps right away and we're trying to think how we could get to that point and Greg Boren said, well, why don't you do what we did with the Ellison Courts and name it? And we're all standing around, it seems pretty easy, yeah, let's do that, so they come up with forty thousand to name the court and ten thousand a court if you would like your name on the court and I was actually hoping that we could paint it in the kitchen and maybe we could talk to your art group, someone that maybe could help with that, it is a painting, I'm not sure if they'd be into that, but one would almost think so.
What is the kitchen?
The kitchen, yes. Okay, so there's the net and then on each side for seven feet is called a kitchen and it's usually painted a different color and we thought a logo of anybody that would sponsor a court would be a good spot right there. They say you can't step in the kitchen unless the ball bounces, so if you want to learn more about that, I'd be happy to show you how to play pickleball. So, in this, so I had my mouth rattling, so now I got to back it up and it's hard for me to go ask people for money without being vested myself, so I talked to my cousin Debbie Mormon and we would give fifty thousand dollars between the two of us for a court in naming the courts and we'd just do it under Krieger and Steinfest to kind of honor our parents, all their hard work, getting that company going and doing what they have if people would think that were to be okay. We also have Ace Manufacturing, Eric Fuller would give ten thousand dollars, I talked to Joe Drager, he said the Drager Family Fund would also do ten, Kurt Parsons and his sister would do ten, Mike Winter, I think, could be a possible donor and we have one person that said that if we can have naming rights, they would give us ten thousand, but they don't want their name on it, so put somebody else's name on it, so I'm not sure exactly how that's going to go, but, so that would give us another sixty-five thousand dollars so far and that'd give us a hundred and ninety-six thousand then, twenty-five thousand of that would be work done by myself, but, so we'd really have a hundred and seventy-one in cash and we need about two hundred and ten to pull off the steps we'd like right now, so we're not real far from there and I don't really want to campaign too hard on this until I have your blessing, just so I don't end up with egg on my face, I thought you said you were going to do this, if that makes sense to you.
Anybody have any questions or discussion for Mr. Krieger or Mr. Leidman?
I guess I just want Jake to, I guess, I'm going to ask the question again because I know some people in the community are still asking this and is this at any cost to taxpayers, taxpayer money, anything like that that is going towards us?
No, no cost to the district at all.
Okay.
I mean, if you guys want to help, we're okay with that, but we're not asking.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified again.
Just voluntary taxpayers.
Yes. Yes, and it's really growing, when we, this winter, we provided a free indoor facility for people to play, we started out with like twenty-six members of the Anago Pickleball Club and you don't have to be a member to play at our facility that we created through the Langley Pickleball Club, that's just to provide a facility for people to play and we'd prefer at no cost and that way, nobody's excluded and their membership has jumped up to around a hundred already, because that club does nice things like buy balls, insurance and things of that nature and so it's, I would suspect next, next year, we'll have two hundred members, just guessing, but the way it's snowballing. And the only other area that, we would have sixteen courts and the only other area, I believe, is over by Beauclaire, I think it's Lake Holly, I heard they're building eighteen courts right now and that's a large area, so I think we really could be, have an impressive court system here, if it would work with you guys.
Some tournaments, stuff like that?
Right, yeah.
Bring people to the town.
Most places that I go, there'd be nine or ten courts and so people like it when it moves along fast and you'll get a better draw, so.
I'm in favor of the motion and I appreciate you coming down and bringing it to the board, I just want to commend you again for all of the hard work and effort and enthusiasm from the pickleballers and what you're doing with that space, that was really an eyesore, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see the progress and to hear the updates on your fundraising efforts are incredible. I have one curiosity question, sixteen courts, is that just based off of the physical space and layout that we have that, is how you decided, how many courts?
Right.
Got it.
At first, I thought we could only get twelve and then after I measured it and we can easily have sixteen really nice sized courts and the thing is, you want to have at least eight feet out of bounds all the way around the court, the front ten will actually have nine feet all the way around, in the back, six will have eight, so a lot of places we go, they'll have six on the side and seven or eight in the back, so we're not just cramming it in there, we're using our space to fulfill its ability to give a nice playing surface. What's really nice is when it's fenced in like that, you don't have to run out with a ball. Using ricochets off and rolls back to you and you're kind of happy.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's an older person's game, so that's a big deal.
Yes.
Another curiosity, I haven't looked, what'd you do with Nigel's Hut, the Nigel Hut? That was that old bathroom?
Oh, that's still there.
I was just going to ask. If the bathrooms are.
It was named after the old superintendent.
What is it called?
It'll cost you ten, it'll cost you ten thousand dollars for that not to happen.
I like it.
Are the bathrooms functionable?
No, no, they're not.
Is there any plan there?
Yes, so Ryan Philbrandt and Nick Musloff have volunteered their time to help us fix them up along with Kurt Packard and some other club members, so we're going to fix those up and get them going again and they seem to be pretty excited about it and they just need a little, little bit bit of cash and we can go a long way, so.
And Dr. Bardot was helping you with that cash for the bathrooms?
Well, thank you, Dave.
So should this pass?
He's buying a bathroom now, is that right?
Oh, now?
Should this pass tonight, how many total of the sixteen courts do you kind of have earmarked for donors?
So I would have, I would have five currently earmarked, so if I could sell the other eleven, then we could possibly finish the court systems off yet this year, how far we'd like to get them except for maybe electrical.
Just wanted to make sure the public was aware what might be available yet for you.
Yes, yes, thank you, yes.
Any other questions, discussion? Anybody up here play pickleball?
In Fayette, we used to play.
Yeah?
With Mr. Ellison. Sure.
I'm still taking on the challenge, Shane, for the pickleball.
All right.
All right, any, no other discussion, voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Letter F, Langley County Hospital and Aquatic Center Contract, I will look for a motion.
I move the board approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Langley Hospital and Aquatic Center Contract.
Motion's been made by Catherine, would you like to speak to your motion?
This is just another standard contract that we vote on every year.
Any discussion of the motion on the floor?
Can you tell me how this works with the contract we have with the?
YMCA?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Vossbender?
Yes. So the YMCA, the contract is for them to be the director and provide the staffing and run the pool, the Langley Hospital, that is for them to provide therapy within and they pay per hour to be able to provide therapy to their clients there, so what we're doing is just negotiating the rate every year, which is standard.
Okay, so where it says, and a lifeguard will be on duty during the user sessions, that's supplied by the YMCA then?
Yes, and that's part of the cost that they are, that is per hour, it's operating costs per hour, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Kelly, sorry.
Sure.
Why do we just, why do we not seek a profit and only have operational costs cover? To me, that sounds like a break even.
Yes, well, last year it was about eighty some dollars, so it wasn't even at operating costs, so we brought it up to operating costs this year, but definitely we can look at that in the future. This is Fund Eighty as well, that operates the aquatic center, so something that we can definitely look at, but it's been brought up significantly as it has been in the past, well below operating costs, which I was unsure as to why that was the case as well.
That's a great point, Kristen, yeah, should definitely be doing that.
We can, yeah.
I think we initially started that discussion two years ago, because I posed that question of our rates seemed to be really low.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we put in a lot of research just to try to figure out why that was so low and there was nothing that we could figure out because we charge our own teams and our own classes a hundred and forty dollars an hour, so we weren't really understanding why would we would charge the school that and then not charge the hospital anywhere near that.
How much usage do they, how much, how many hours do they do?
I would have to look to see how many hours that they do, but you can see in the contract, there's a general amount that they've agreed on, but those schedules are made with the director, so it's, we could probably look at what generally it has been the last few years, but it's been used pretty consistently.
Do you know if any, anybody that's using this safer water therapy, say their doctor gives them, you know, or that they have to do water therapy, is it somehow on the medical side billed to their insurance?
That I do not know the details on.
Or they're like making some good?
It would definitely be something to research more deeply.
Okay.
For sure. And we haven't gotten that far into researching how much they make off of their clients' insurance and looking at all of those things, but I think it's definitely something to look into and look into what our profits could be and what's best practice and then working with auditors to ensure that we're following Fund Eighty guidelines as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mrs. Vossbender? Okay, hearing no questions of the motion on the floor, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed. And the motion carries. Thank you. Letter G, preliminary budget twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget.
Motion's been made by Dr. Bardot, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, it was presented at our budget committee meeting and Kelly's put a lot of work into it, I know Mrs. Zojinski has, they've talked for years about at some point, we're going to hit the financial cliff, supposedly this is the year and the other thing we have to remember as board members, ESER funds are, you know, we had four point one million dollars of ESER funds last year and that's now gone, so we have to tighten our belt and hopefully this preliminary budget takes care of that, we all have to understand that this is the best guess because we will not know the exact numbers until after the third Friday count and then in October, we get what we are going to receive, notice of what we're going to receive from the state for our Fund Ten and Twenty-Seven budgets.
You know, the questions or discussion of the motion on the floor, just want to echo what Dr. Bardot said, this is very preliminary, as many of you know, the actual budget is looked closely later in the year. Okay, hearing no discussion of the motion on?
I guess, I get, how much would it cost us if we doubled the amount to the last, to Mr. Lewandowski's comments?
We'll have to save that question for the next item on the agenda for the teachers' compensation.
Does it, does it affect this number though, is it in a weird order or is that a?
I can answer. I don't know. JD, go ahead and ask that question.
I can answer it, if I'm wrong, then jump up. When you do a preliminary budget, you have a number in there for raises, basically what's being put forth is where Kelly's recommendation is and Mrs. Zojinski's at this time and so you have it built in to the expected amount that they are projecting that we're going to get from the amount of students we'll have and so within that budget with everything else in there, you have to remember that salaries are usually around ninety percent of your budget.
Right, but so if you only take the last group of teachers, right, and go from one thousand to two thousand, how much money does that cost us?
Well, that's, we have to talk it the next time, at the next one. Again, it's all, anything that's in this preliminary budget is based on what Kelly has going to be bringing forth in H and I, and it's already in there. And then if we change it as a board, like we did last year, which was considerable, then that affects other things within the budget. So whatever we add to what she's presenting takes away from something else.
And the budget can then be changed? If we, if we change something in letter H or letter I with the preliminary budget, because this is not the adopted budget, it can still be changed. Does that make sense JD?
Yeah.
That's why I was kind of waiting for that question, I know the value of that question, uh, for the next item. Actually, the next two items. Does that clarify? Okay, any other questions or discussion? Did I see, did you have your hand up, did I, did I see that out of the corner of my eye? Okay, just seeing things. Uh, the voting device is now open for letter G, the preliminary budget, uh, to be approved. Alright, would anyone like to change their vote? Vote is now closed and the motion carries. Letter H Teacher Compensation, I will be looking for a motion.
I guess, if you added the lane, how much would that cost?
Can you, we have to have a motion first, please sir.
I move the board approve the recommendation for teaching staff at the end of the compensation, that's, yeah. At the end of the compensation plan, receive an increase of one thousand for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion's been made by Catherine, would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Now refer to you, Scott, if you wanna move your mic a little closer, please.
How much would adding a ninth lane cost?
For the people that we have on it this year, I believe that there is nine, but they're not all at the same salary level. So if you look at the back page, so I, I will go through this presentation so you can understand the rationale and the background as to what's happened historically.
I guess I read that and I get the, my, my one comment is, echo what Pete would say as a former teacher and also think if you wanna retain these guys, their last three years impacts their retirement quite a bit.
Right.
So that's a huge consideration for these guys. So if we really wanna retain them, I don't know, we have to think hard about that.
Right, and throughout the report, we talked about how the last three years has been, have, uh, the board has significantly increased the salary schedule. Um, so each cell, each year for the past three years has gone up to twelve hundred dollars. So that, and I have examples in here, so if we'd like to go through all of that, you can understand the impact that's already happened for the past three years and then moving forward, how that will impact the budget.
But you're talking about guys who have worked for thirty-five years underpaid. It's, it's my comment, because they've been underpaid for a long time. Kudos for us for raising it, that doesn't help them this year.
And that's a decision the board will have to make, that doesn't come from me. I can just provide, I can just provide budgetary data, I can provide budgetary impact and I can provide historical context as to what's been done in the past. Um, so, and that's a board decision that you'll have to come to, um, to determine what best, um, next steps are. So I'm just going to go through this report, you do have it in front of you, but there is a lot of, a lot of information in it. So each year, the Anago School District, so not just this year, but every single year, the district goes through and analyzes the budget, that's based on available funding derived from state aid, state and federal grants, donations, payments to private schools for the voucher program, um, open enrollment in and out payments, rural virtual academy enrollment payments out of the district and then overall enrollment figures, which have been significantly declining for many years. Um, this comprehensive analysis also accounts for the factors such as health inc- um, insurance increases, which over the past two years has been over twenty-four percent. Um, given these variables, the district determines-
Increases to the district or to staff?
So we have not increased contribution percentages, um, but overall it does increase and I, I will go through and let you know the very insignificant changes that it has to our employees, which we tried to make sure that we did not increase contributions whatsoever. Um, so given these variables, the district determines annual salary increases, which has been different every year over as many years as they have done this. So they've done many different, um, many different packages. So the district has recommended various combinations for the salary adjustments, health insurance packages. In some years, dis- staff have received a percentage salary increase or increases to eat, to the salary schedule without a step movement. In other years, salary inclusive, in- increases included step movements as well as percentage raises. Um, health insurance contributions and deductibles have also fluctuated over the years and sometimes increasing in response to salary adjustments or remaining stable or declining, depending on the financial landscape that the district is facing at that time. This year, we are also taking into account the loss of, over the last two years, four point eight million dollars in Esser funds. Four point two, um, of that was used this year, um, for Esser funds, which we will be losing that four point two next year, or as of June thirtieth. And this is also a very significant number, which has increased drastically over the past, um, couple of years, is that we have about three point one million dollars that we pay out to rural virtual academy, meaning that when students do not want to be brick and mortar within our schools, they are then going to a virtual school for many different reasons, but we are paying about seven hundred thousand dollars out for our students to be able to do that. And the rest of the three point one million is coming out of students open enrolling out of our district for various reasons and also voucher schools. And the caps for voucher schools are going to be coming off within the next couple of years. So if we do not do significant changes to our organization, that's going to be very financially devastating to the district. Um, despite these financial challenges, we are striving to maintain as many staff members as possible. So as you know, we had to right-size the district because, um, many positions were created with the use of Esser funds, knowing that they were going to be, um, no longer here next year. We tried to retain as many staff as we possibly could, even if they were created with Esser funds, um, because we know the needs of our students and we know the needs of our staff and our parents as well. So we tried to maintain as many as we possibly could. We also have been striving to provide a comparable salary, um, that's a really key point, a comparable salary to the other districts around us, as well as a very strong health benefits package. And we also are ensuring that staff, including support staff, so we aren't just focusing on teachers at the beginning, teachers at the end, um, food service, custodial staff. Um, we are focusing on doing what's best, the mo- the best that we can for everybody involved, because we are all a team and every single position is very critical to our students. We have maintained and not increased deductibles, which we will talk about figures later on, or contribution percentages to our premiums for our employees. So this approach ensures that the district remains financially responsible while striving to offer competitive compensation and benefit packages. The district's recommendations have also varied annually to reflect current funding situations, which we talked a little bit about, um, the insurance cost increases and other financial considerations demonstrating a flexible and responsive budgetary strategy tailored to the district's unique needs. So one of the things that we do is we compare with other districts, as I said. So we get together as, um, an organization, we talk to other business managers, HR directors, we look at what are we all, and we, we are all very collaborative when it comes to this because we need to make sure that we are providing equitable opportunities for all of our kids and all of our districts are in different situations. So some districts provide, since Act Ten, everything has been very, very different within districts. So you have some districts that have just a base pay. Everybody gets the same, no matter how many years you're there and it's based on professional development, based on degrees, based on different things that you do as a staff member in order to grow that year, or, and then everything changes every year. Um, there's some districts that provide very large, um, increases such as eight percent in one year and then in the next year, they don't offer anything. And that's their strategy is every other year, um, that's what they do to try to build their fund balance or whatever type of unique situation, but those are two examples of area districts. Some districts might only provide a percentage to the base pay. So in our situation, that would be, um, forty-two, four. And then they have, that's what you get CPI too, and then everything else is on top of that. So every district is very, very different, um, since Act Ten. So just as a reminder, I know that it was talked about as to what's been done in the past three years. So one example, um, your salary schedule in twenty-one, twenty-two, your teachers started at forty thousand dollars. Each year, you increased the actual cells by twelve hundred dollars, which did not even account for the step or the lane that they got. So if you increase the cell from the next year, the next salary schedule by twelve hundred dollars, that means if you're moving up a step and it's a thousand dollars, you're getting a twenty-two hundred thousand, or twenty-two hundred, um, dollar increase that year. If you're moving a step, it's twenty-five hundred plus the twelve hundred. So you're getting a twenty-seven hundred dollar, or?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven hundred dollar increase. So I provide some examples there. But just from two thousand twenty-one to currently, you have increased each step by twenty-four hundred dollars, which, um, and then we'll talk about some significant steps that you had last year as well. The school board increased, as I said, every salary step the last three years by twelve hundred dollars. So if you move a step, like I said, that was the twenty-two and the thirty-seven, resulting in a double increase. Last year, stuff with, staff, staff with fifteen years plus of service received a double step. So that means if they were at one step and then they were gonna move a lane, they would move a step and a lane, in addition to the salary twelve hundred dollars that this, that the lanes were increased by. Teachers also, um, received a one thousand dollar contribution to their health reimbursement arrangement annually, which is something that they've been receiving for many years, we continued that and we're continuing that again next year. Despite the twelve percent increase of health insurance costs last year, the district chose not to increase staff contribution percentages or deductibles, thereby, um, shielding employees from higher premiums and higher deductibles, which would then offset salary increases. The district also maintained its current contribution rates, with the district covering ninety-one point eight-five percent and the employees eight point one-five for the signature plan. We do have a small amount of staff that choose to have the Freedom Plan, which has Marshfield Clinic involved in it, and that is, the district covers eighty-six point five percent of that and the employees are at thirteen point five. Um, last year, support staff received a dollar raise, without, without this, some would remain at the state, the same pay rate and remain frozen, um, until they reach specific milestones. So they would not get an increase and it was very, very minimal, um, until they were at year two, year five, year ten, fifteen and twenty. So, um, we did not find that that was in any way, shape or form acceptable, so we wanted to make sure with that pot of money that we are able to allocate to budgets that support staff also, every single one of them were receiving a raise. So these, last year's salary and ins- insurance cha- changes had a budget impact of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, almost eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. The current year context, um, the district experienced other sub, another substantial twelve point five percent increase in insurance, health insurance costs, um, which is another additional budget impact of about four hundred and fifty thousand, depending on where open enrollment rolls. The district maintained its current contribution rates again, which means we're about, about ninety-two percent and about eight percent for the signature plan and again, that eighty-six point five and three point, thirteen point five for the Freedom Plan. So just to put that into monetary numbers that you can, um, more easily understand what that would look like, for a single pers- a single person on the Signature Plan, which is the plan that the majority of our staff are on, the district is paying a health insurance contribution of six hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents per month, which is seven thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety cents annually per employee. The employee will pay fifty-five dollars per month, um, which is six hundred and forty-one dollars per, or annually. The district pays, uh, five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars of a deductible and the employee pays sixteen hundred. So this is a value of thirteen ninety-six ninety, um, thirteen thousand ninety-six dollar value for the employee that the district is paying for their health insurance benefits and deductible. If you're a family, if you have a family plan for the Signature Plan, the district is paying one thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-nine cents per month, which is twenty-one thousand four hundred and ten dollars and seventy-six cents annually. The employee is paying about, um, one hundred and forty-two seventy-four per month, which annually is one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents a year. The district pays ten thousand nine hundred in deductible for the employee and the employee pays three thousand two hundred. So this is an additional value for our employees on the family plan of thirty-two thousand three hundred and ten dollars and seventy-six cents. Um, support staff in this compensation plan are recommended to receive a fifty cent an hour raise to prevent their salaries from being frozen, which we talked about earlier. And, um, these increases to support staff salaries from the twenty-three, twenty-four and projected twenty-three, twenty-five school year, if it's approved, would have an average raise over the two years of seven point six percent. So depending on where staff are falling on the s- the scale, that increase would range from five percent to thirteen percent. There's another key piece to this and that's the reduction of twelve contracted days for support staff and for teaching staff. So we did not reduce the salaries of teachers based on this change and we are working to maintain support staff's hours to ensure that they don't lose salary or benefits as well. Um, for teachers at or beyond the last step, instead of reducing their salary, if you were to do a per diem rate, that if we reduce salary, um, for these teachers by the twelve days, that would be about, you know, and averaging out where all these teachers fall on the after-step salary, it'd be about five thousand two hundred dollars to match that reduction. We did not choose to do that and, um, they will re- retain their current salary and receive an additional thousand dollars totaling six thousand two hundred dollars of, um, impact. Teachers beyond step three would receive an additional thousand dollar step increase to their salary, which does maintain competitive competitiveness with our neighboring districts, such as Merrill Area School District, for example, which has, even has more contracted days than we do. And again, teachers will continue to receive that thousand dollar deposit in their each refund. So a few examples are, um, last year, like I said, and even the prior two years before that, um, every cell increased by twelve hundred dollars. Plus, all staff, staff moved a step or lane, which would be an additional one thousand or twenty-five hundred, depending on if it was a step or a lane. This would total either twenty, two thousand two hundred dollars or three thousand seven hundred dollars increase on their salary, depending on if the teacher was moving a lane or a step. If you are a teacher who was in the fifteen years plus, um, you were, again, moved two steps on the salary schedule. So they received a two thousand two hundred dollar increase last year and an additional thousand dollars this year, which would total, uh, three thousand two hundred dollars in salary increase and zero increase to health insurance contributions or deductibles. And then obviously that would include that thousand dollar HRA contribution, so that's two thousand dollars of the last, over this year. two-thousand dollars of the last, over this year and la, and next year. If you are a teacher who moved a lane bef, below the fifteen years with the district, they received the thirty-seven, three-thousand-seven-hundred-dollar raise last year and an additional one-thousand this year. So, it'd be forty-seven-hundred. So, if you are a staff member that was fifteen years plus, moving two steps on the schedule, each cell received that twelve-hundred-dollar increase, and you jumped two spots on the salary schedule. So, if you were a staff member who moved two steps, they would have received a three-thousand-two-hundred-dollar salary increase in the last year, and then this year, move another lane, that would be two-thousand-five-hundred-dollar increase for a total of five-thousand-seven-hundred dollars in two years, plus the thousand-dollar HRA contribution for retirement, and then, if you're on a family plan, that's an additional thirty-two-thousand. On the back, I do have the salary amounts for the people who are at or beyond the salary scale. You can see what they made in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. You can see what the increase would be to twenty-four, twenty-five, what the value of those twelve additional days would be, your step increase, and then the HRA contribution, what your per diem rate is, and how that aligns to internal alignment within the district. At the bottom, you can see our salary schedule compared to Merrill Area Public Schools as well, noticing that if you are a teacher, at the end of the salary scale, it's significantly lower. If you have a bachelor's degree, if you have a master's degree, we fall right in line with those numbers, and we are also looking at the same longevity increase as Merrill Area Public Schools, which is just one example. If you look just on the next page, you can see that if a teacher is at seventy-eight-thousand, then they would drop down from the one-thousand to the five-hundred in the, in one of our competitive school districts. One of the things I thought was very important that we took into account very carefully was what other employees are doing to combat rising healthcare costs. They are looking at medical plan design changes, which we have not. They are looking to increase employee premiums, which we have not. We are, they are looking at different market carrier options and different prescription plan design changes. And then, if you are looking at comparison, so, at the bottom of the page, where you can see on the left side, it says "single averages" and "anigo single," you can see that on the top-left square, it says that the averages for four-hundred-and-one districts in the survey, the monthly premium is seven-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. Ours is seven-twenty for the signature. The monthly employee contribution is ninety-one dollars. Ours is fifty-one for the signature.
Kelly, did you mean six-hundred-and-twenty?
Six-twenty for the signature.
Yes, did I say something?
Seven-twenty, so it's six-twenty for the signature.
Yes.
Is what we have, and the state average is seven-hundred-and-ninety-two.
Yes. Mm-hmm, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Looking at the six-seventy-four below, just looking at too many numbers. And then, you look at the deductible. So, this one is a little bit, this one looks different because the district actually covers most of that, so you'll want to look at the top-right, where the out-of-pocket amount for our employees, it was fifteen-hundred dollars last year, and because of IRS guidelines to keep, which is nothing to do with us, allowing them to still be able to utilize an HSA account to put their money in, to have ta, positive tax impacts, they, we had to move it up to sixteen-hundred. But, looking at the out-of-pocket for us, this is last year's data, that is fifteen-hundred and out-of-pocket in the average of the state, it's three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-one for a single. And the employee share of deductible, if you, employer share. So, on the bottom, you'll see that the employer, so the district's share in anigo is five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty, and the state average is five-hundred-and-ninety. So, the district is significantly paying higher to shield our employees from rising costs. And then, lastly, on the back, you'll see how our family plans compare with the state average. So...
Did you say five-thousand or five-hundred?
So, the anigo school districts pays five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and the average districts in the state pay five-hundred-ninety. Yes, there's a significant difference there. And then, lastly, on the back, you'll see how our family plans compare. So, I'll just take you through a few, looking at the employer's share of the deductible on that bottom-right box, you'll see that our employ, us as a school district pays eleven-thousand dollars, and the employer in this average of our districts in our state is one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight. And then, you'll look at the out-of-pocket max on the top-right, we are at three-thousand. Now, we're at thirty-two-hundred because of IRS changes, but again, this is last year's data, and the out-of-pocket max for the state is six-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen. You'll also notice that the employee monthly contributions, or the premium contribution percentage, within the state, that's two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars for employees, in anigo, it's sixty-four. So, those are some helpful numbers to look at what the rest of the state is comparing as far as health insurance benefits and deductibles.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, are you ready for questions?
I'll do my best.
All right.
Good answer.
Questions, Angie, you go first.
Okay.
And we're going to keep these questions in order, so hold your questions, write them down. We won't interrupt other board members as they're asking their questions, please. Thanks.
Okay, so, we provide a one-thousand HRA contribution.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you said.
Yes.
So, are staff required to also meet, match that in order to get the thousand?
No, this is in addition to the WRS, which is the Wisconsin Retirement System, that's required for, for employees and for the district to match. This is in addition to. This is an additional, different account that we offer a benefit of contributing a thousand dollars into a retirement se, account for them.
It's a retirement or is it HRA?
It's a he, a health retirement account, so...
Okay, okay.
But, you can take it upon retirement.
But, they, but, we'll put in a thousand dollars and the employee does not need to pay anything?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I have more questions, but if anybody has...
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, you've got the floor right now.
All right. Can, do teachers get paid more if they, like, teach summer school?
Yes.
Okay. And then, what, what is the benefit to the district to pay more of the employee's share? Explain why we want to keep doing that?
Well, the...
Other than to be nice, I mean, obviously.
It's either way you look at it. So, it has to come from, it's what your district can afford. So, by maintaining high-quality health insurance packages, it's another way to attract and maintain employees. But, if you're looking at increasing salaries, well, then, where is it going to come from as what Dr. Bardo was saying, and districts combat that with raising the employee contribution to, which alleviates district costs, which then the district can put into salary, into the salary scale? Or use in other ways.
Hold that thought, JD.
Okay. But, there's like no, no benefit, I don't know, for any kind of funding mechanism or anything like that?
No, it's merely to, and I shouldn't say merely, but it is a priority to attract and maintain staff members, and having high-quality health insurance is one of those ways. So, that's the benefit to the district and to our employees at the same time.
Okay, all right. That's all my questions.
Okay, JD.
Can lane eight, if I understand this right, could they have a, pay more of their health insurance, but then also get a higher raise to help their retirement packages, or is that not allowed?
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, we have to chart, we have to have everybody pay equal. So, we can't just say, you can pay more of it and then have more in your salary. So, it's an all-or-nothing kind of situation.
If Act 10 gets repealed, right, I think it's before the Supreme Court now, what do you think will happen?
That's a great question. I do not know. Because this has gone to court many times. This has gone to court many times, so I, I do not know what's going to happen, but...
I mean, so let's assume the teachers reunionize. How does that, that was, it was done before I was on the board, so I don't know how negotiating is different then.
Ken, I don't have all of those answers. All I know is that we are looking to, the salary schedule was agreed upon before my time. So, however the district had come to the agreement that they were going to do a salary schedule, that, I, I don't know when the union was here and when it wasn't, or any of those details. All I know is there's a salary schedule here now, and that is what the district's been following for as far back as I can find records for.
I don't think there is any negotiating.
Hold just a minute, hold just a minute, Scott, we're still with JD.
Sorry, I just...
I'll come to you next.
Right, I might have needed the help, but the, so, it, to, what is the financial cost of adding another lane? It does nine people in it versus just doubling it? Is, because it's adding on to their salary, right, and that's what increases their retirement account, because nine-thousand dollars adding doesn't seem like that much, you know, to double it, it's...
And, you know, that's, that is going to be the choice that you have to make. You can look at how everyone is different as well. It's not that everybody's on that last step at the seventy-five-four.
It's just, you know, it's a low, it's a low percentage wage increase, right? Like, if you're trying to be even three percent, even two thousand is still less than that, right? It's only, what, I don't know, two-point-eight or something, I didn't do them.
So, the, one of the, and this is, again, a decision that the board's going to have to make, but the rationale behind this recommendation was comparability with other districts, so we want to be competitive and comparable with area districts. We also want to do the best for the most, so we wanted to make sure that everybody is seeing equitable increases. So, we wanted to maintain, you know, our first-year teachers are only getting an increase of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. You'll look at the other lanes, if you're moving a step, it's a thousand dollars. If you're moving a lane, it's twenty-five-hundred. If you're looking at area school districts, that bottom, or that last step, it is a thousand dollars or five-hundred dollars in all the areas that we could find. So, again, we're just trying to be comparable and competitive, and we are looking at doing the best for most, because...
But, there's no practical difference if you just said, oh, we're going to do twenty-five-hundred, tack it on to that last, on lane eight, that'd be the same thing as moving a step, we just wouldn't have step nine, it'd be the same. Or is there a difference?
It will impact your, the next year, and the next year, and the next year.
But, it does that regardless of whether it's an increase or a step, right?
Well, each additional year that you're paying that twenty-five-hundred every year. So, then, your additional increases every year will be increased upon that twenty-five-hundred. So, it'll be twenty-five-hundred this year, and then it'll be an additional twenty-five-hundred next year, and then whatever the salary increase is for next year, so it all builds.
But, that's what's going to happen with the thousand, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so, there's no difference between adding it on to lane eight or adding a step?
Um, we're not looking to change the salary schedule at this point. I'm not sure that I'm understanding your question clear, I am not understanding totally.
Am I asking a clear question? I just...
We're not going to...
You're saying, I think you're saying the impact would be the same, whether you created a step or...
Right, if we just put...
Added more money.
Yes, and is that true, or is that...
So, I think it's important to know too that because of the amount of workload, this is not an excuse, but to help maybe provide some understanding, a lot of the work that Kelly is going to be doing next year with a committee of teachers, speech, school counselors, is to recreate our teacher compensation plan, because particularly at the low end of the scale, we are not competitive. We are not comparable to our surrounding districts, which means we are not going to be attracting the lesser experienced teachers as our veteran staff move into retirement. Not that they're, they're all-important, and we want to retain all of them, because you just can't buy a veteran teacher and all of their knowledge. It's, it's important to us to do that, but there is more work than just adding a lane, or there's more of it that needs to go into it, and it's a year-long's worth of work to happen. So, there is a plan in place to do that, along with developing comp plans for, for everyone, and redoing perhaps our support staff plan the way it is, because you have to sift through and figure out what category you fit into to determine what your salary would be. So, I just think it's important to know that there is a plan to revisit all of this, along with, you know, a lot of the work that we did early on last year, when I first started, was looking at trying to maybe correct mistakes that had happened in the past, and there's only so much riding the ship that we can do within one year's time. Again, not making excuses, just explaining our current reality.
Okay, so, one more, and then you go to Kristen, maybe it's two more. So, this, the, the governor's perpetual four-hundred-year, I think it's two-hundred dollars per student, also at the Supreme Court. If I was just betting, without reading the case, I would bet it is upheld, because you can just bet on the politics. But, the, is that what's in the budget? How much student, per student increase, or is there none for next year, or don't we know?
There is a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar-per-student increase, but again, you don't know what your open enrollment out is. Our projected student enrollment for over many years is consistently declining. Our open enrollment is consistently increasing. Our rural virtual academy is increasing, and our vouchers out is increasing. So, that's three-point-one-million dollars. If we would bring students back into our schools, back into our high school, back into our elementary schools, we would have three-point-one-million dollars additional to put into salaries, to put into programming, and to put into our facilities. So, there's only so much part of, is part of the pie. So, again, I don't, I have a prediction as to how that's going to go. I know what next year is, but the biennium budget, everything can change, your enrollment changes. So, that's why it is preliminary, because you, no districts in the state of Wisconsin get their actuels until October, and you still throughout the year are fluctuating with open enrollment vouchers, and, which I said, the caps are coming off, which is going to significantly impact us, because we're at the cap right now. And RVA is seven-hundred, seven-hundred-thousand dollars. So, if we could get our kids back from RVA, imagine what we could put into the salary schedule there.
So, we can't do a conditional wage increase, like, hey, we get two more kids, now we can afford twenty-thousand more in the staff schedule?
That would be wonderful.
No. We cannot.
It's no problem. Let's rewrite the contracts weekly.
JD, or are you...
I don't see anybody signing that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kristen, hold that thought, because I said I was going to Scott first, unless, Scott, you've already said what you wanted to say.
Yeah, well, I just, as a former negotiator, negotiating has totally changed. There is no process where we sit down face-to-face anymore. There's no face-to-face negotiation. So, since Act 10, the board, the board comes with an offer, and the teachers come here and speak their piece and hope you're, hope they're heard. That's the negotiation process now.
Which is standard for most employment.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that was, that's, yeah.
I just wanted to make a couple clarifying points. Glenda, when you were speaking, you said that our lower, lower wages are not competitive. Kelly, when you were speaking, you said our higher wages are competitive.
Yes.
So, somewhere along the line, we're making up ground. Focus across most employers right now is on aborting, onboarding and attracting quality candidates. Once you have them, you do other things to keep them. It's not usually a monetary compensation at that point. Also, across all of our raises, it's a standard number, not a percentage of, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to defer to any of the board members that have not spoken yet on this issue. Bobby, I saw your hand.
Yep, question and comment. First of all, I appreciate your rationale, Kelly. I understand that if you take away from benefit to pay more salaries, you're not getting anywhere. So, I think employees can appreciate that the health insurance packages have remained. Sidebar thought with that is I think we should shop around for some different health insurance, but that's just a thought.
We have. We went out to market, and this was the best. We spent all year going out to market and looking at different plans and what we could do, and so, this was the best package that we could get, and the best increase. So, the reason for that is because we have a lot of high-cost claimants. So, we're, what we're paying out in claim... So what we're paying out in claims is significantly more than what we're paying in for premiums. So, and you can't help people's health situations.
So then my other question was on page two, it talks about there being a reduction for teachers and staff with the twelve days.
Um.
Twelve contracted days.
So with, yes, so their contract was a hundred and ninety days, teachers was. Now it's at a hundred and seventy-eight.
Okay, so with that being said, you're averaging that approximate fifty-two hundred, saying that they're still getting paid that money, but they're just working twelve less days per year?
Yes.
So I just wanna make that, like, noted. I think this may come across as they're getting a raise totaling sixty-two hundred. They're not really getting a sixty-two hundred dollar raise.
Right.
They're just working twelve less days and still getting the thousand bucks.
Yes.
Okay.
On top of the last year's salary.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which was two steps.
Okay.
With an increase of an additional twelve hundred.
Right.
Okay, we have three board members. Bobby, you done? I don't wanna cut you off.
I haven't finished, thank you.
Three other board members have not spoken on this issue. I'm gonna defer to one of the three that have not spoken, to be fair.
I have, this is my fourth time as a board member in this discussion. Each time I've been a strong advocate on behalf of the veteran staff, and I appreciate the feedback tonight as well. I think they're the cornerstone and the strength of any district, and especially our district. So I would love to do anything we can to keep them here, also knowing that at some point, they've earned retirement. So naturally, progression is, is retirement. So I'm gonna take the opportunity to say thank you to the staff. Most, if not all, no, just me as one individual, how grateful I am for them, and I'd like to keep them as long as we can. And then I just, I just have comments, and it's, I appreciate the historical data in looking at the cost for the district and the cost for individuals, for the staff. I don't wanna forget to highlight what Bobby just talked about, essentially an additional pay period, right? The twelve contracted days, so it's essentially an additional pay period that we are not expecting any staff, nor asking staff to show up to work. You are simply getting an additional paycheck, which I think is really creative. So what I highlight here is I, every time we go through our health insurance costs of what the employee is required to pay, it's exceptionally great health insurance benefits, and I'm always blown away at what our district's able to offer. So at the end of the day, if you're a staff member considering staying, going, or retiring, you look at what are your benefits. So it's not just your hourly salary, but your HSA, what your contributing employer is, your retirement benefit, PLT, all of those things. So it's not just the number for a salary, but it's the benefits included, and then essentially, what are you making per hour? Or what would you lose if you stay or go or retire, whatever? I think our biggest talking points that is pretty strategic and creative that I would highlight as a district is, again, additional pay period without having to work, and our significantly wonderful health insurance costs in addition to what the board has done in my time with increasing salaries and eye rolls from two previous finance directors, eye rolls in a good way, but like, we don't know where we're gonna come up with that money, because that's not what we budgeted for. So I share that as a strength in support of the staff of previous years, too, of the work that we've done.
I will also note, Jill's comment is that in the increases since two thousand twenty-one school year, S R funds and federal stimulus funds were always part of the picture, and those will not be at all part of the picture. So I mean, that is a really significant piece as to the school board really utilizing the federal stimulus funds as much as they possibly could to be able to use it for operational costs and put that into the salary schedule and maintain or increase health insurance contributions. And without that cushion that has been there for operational costs, we've tried to get very creative with, with doing that and keeping and maintaining, so.
Okay, two other board members, if you would like to speak before I ask for any other discussion or comments.
I have no comments or questions.
Catherine's no comment at this time. Dr. Bardo?
This is just off the top of my head, so the numbers may not line up exactly. But one of the things Kelly said was about the raises that have come in the past keep working for the teachers who receives them. So I'm gonna go back and remind people, one of the things this board did was gave a thousand dollar stipend after, to every staff member after the COVID situation. Last year, we gave the double step to all our employees who are fifteen years plus. And so I'm just gonna give an example. Let's say we had an employee who was at seventy thousand dollars and got a thousand, two hundred dollars on the base, which went to every step. Then they moved a step, which was a thousand dollars, got another step, because we gave them two steps. That's thirty-two hundred dollar increase for that person. If they changed a lane, instead of thirty-two thousand, they received another fifteen, hundred dollars, which makes a forty-seven hundred dollar raise. So let's take the first example. You have a person who was making seventy thousand. They got, what'd I say, twenty, thirty-four hundred, okay? So they went from seven thousand to thirty-four hundred, okay? Now, if we give a thousand dollars this year, that person gets seventy-four hundred, seventy-four thousand, four hundred. If we hadn't given, given the double step, they'd be back to seventy, starting at seventy, getting the twelve and getting the one. So they'd be at seventy-two, two, and they're now at seventy-four, four. And every year for the rest of their teaching life, they've gotten a two thousand, four hundred dollar raise on their salary because of that double step. For the people who got the additional fifteen hundred, it's like every year, they started at seventy, and now every year they're at getting an extra thirty-nine hundred every year as they go toward retirement, because of what the board did last year. And we have to remember that, because we made a significant increase last year for our older teachers, and it was a good thing to do, I think in retrospect. However, that was a significant cost to this district. It was over eight hundred thousand dollars. And that eight hundred thousand dollars keeps going through every year for the rest of the time those, all those people are here. And am I glad they're here? Yes. But we need to recognize, we made a significant thing for them as they go towards retirement. Because as, as they've said, your retirement is based on your three highest years of salary. And we made a significant difference for those fifteen plussers, and it is gonna help them when they do retire.
I think, I agree, but you're asking them to trust the process that they will get raises down the, I mean, if all of a sudden we have to start freezing salaries, then they're, then they're froze where they're at. So then they don't get that gain if they stay for a while, is all I'm saying.
Well, that's actually an interesting point you bring up, because during COVID, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, even in twenty twenty-two, we did not freeze any salaries. And there were a lot of, lot of local and state, national employers that did freeze. So that, looking back, what if moving forward, but looking back too, we also didn't do the freeze when most of our county and neighboring counties did get freezes for a while, including healthcare workers.
Yeah, we just gotta hope we don't have to do that.
Hundred percent.
And they, we're asking them to trust us, is my only point.
Yep.
I have two comments.
Okay, Angie, go ahead.
So I have two comments. My first is thank you for putting all this time and effort into, you know, into this and helping us to really understand and explain everything very well. So thank you for that. Appreciate that very much. Second thing is, I can also see the perspective of teachers that are coming, retirement's coming. They're looking forward to that. And, you know, and if, if they don't have, you know, if, if they're even, you know, if they have like some minor issues with their health or whatever, I could see the point of, I would wanna maximize my salary. You know, I'll pay more for my insurance, because I don't plan on using, you know, as much, right? So I would wanna maximize my salary so that it impacts my retirement as best as I could possibly get that set up for. So I get, I can see that perspective too. So those are my, those are my two comments.
Okay. Any other discussion on this side? Okay, Kelly, I wanna thank you and your team. This is very important, it's vitally important. That's why I felt spending as much time as possible as we could on this item. But thank your team for all of their countless hours of work on this. Okay, the motion on the floor is, I will read this again, and Michelle, help me remind me who made that motion. Catherine? Catherine, thank you. I move the board approve the recommendation for teaching staff at the end of the compensation plan, receive an increase of one thousand dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That is the motion on the floor that you are voting for. The voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed. Okay, the motion carries with eight in favor and one against. Letter I, I will, Michelle, if you'll please note in the minutes that, that I'm recusing myself from all discussion voting, and I will turn the gavel over to Dr. Bardo.
Board action I, support staff compensation. I'm looking for a motion.
I move the board approve a fifty cent per hour increase to support staff for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Angie, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, not this time.
Anyone at the table like to talk to this motion? The only thing I wanna say is, when Kelly came to us at our committee level, she stressed to us that, and I think it was two, five, ten.
Ten and twenty.
Ten, fifteen, twenty, that once you got to step two and got the raise, you were at that level until you hit number five, and then you got a raise. And then for the next five years, you were at the same salary. What they're attempting to do is give every worker in the support staff a fifty cent raise. So that's the presentation.
But we're not changing the schedule, so your, your higher on would still get the twenty-three, seventy-five, or whatever.
So just to reiterate what you're saying, Kristen, is they're just getting the fifty cents. There's no, there's no cost of living per se increase to the entire schedule.
Kelly, yeah, get up. Thank you. Thank you. Well, she was already getting up. Thank you, please.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Big difference.
Right, so that percentage increase is going to impact everybody different. So fifty cents to the low end is going to be obviously a higher in, percentage than it is to someone who's at the higher. And this is historically how it's been done in the past within the district, is they've done, like Kristen mentioned earlier, an open, or I mean, a consistent amount for every area, rather than a percentage to the whole piece, to provide equitable increases for all. So yes, it would be a different percentage based on where you are within the salary schedule, same as with the teachers.
So then how do we adjust for that milestone raise? Because if you're getting fifty cents now, well, then your milestone is gonna be.
They get that too.
So you get the diff, so if you're going from twenty-four, I can't do this kind of math like Dr. Bardo. Okay, twenty-two oh five to twenty-two fifty-eight, that's a fifty-three cent raise, but you already got fifty cents, and I, or do you get the fifty-three on top of the fifty?
Everybody would be getting the fifty cents on top of wherever they move to. So they're still moving on the salary schedule, so they're not frozen. They're still moving. And then if they were to hit that five-year milestone, they're getting an additional amount. And we are going to be changing the salary schedule next year to eliminate all of this two, five, ten, fifteen, twenty.
Okay.
And in equities with that.
So then, that will answer my question, because I'm saying like, in the future, when they hit that milestone, okay, that answers, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, your devices are open, and you may vote. Oh, that's Danny, okay. Seeing that all have voted, would anyone like to change their vote?
Well, Danny, don't you wanna abstain? You can abstain on this.
I don't even wanna have that record.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Racine, you can show the votes. Thank you, and it passes.
Okay, letter J, insurance renewal. I will be looking for a motion.
I move the board to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five liability renewals contract.
Motion's been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Nope, I'd hand it off to Kelly or Glenda, if anybody has anything further in addition to what's attached.
Kelly, do you have anything to add, other than it's just a routine renewal for our liability insurance?
Any other questions or discussion of the insurance renewal with the information that's attached? Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing no questions or discussion, the voting device is now open. Would anyone like to change their vote? The vote is now closed, and the motion carries. Letter K, report of donations. I will be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the following donations: five hundred dollars from Glenn Weber Paul for softball, five hundred from Swiderski Equipment for volunteer event, four hundred and twenty dollars from Langley County Farm Bureau for Day on the Farm, fifty, and fifty dollars from El Simac County for Aquatic Center in memory of Roger Erdel, for a total of one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars.
Gail, you left your purse. She didn't hear me. Motion's been made by Jill. Would you like to speak to your motion?
As always, I, on behalf of the board, we appreciate the donations from our community and your generosity.
I will echo that, as well as I'm sure all board members would echo. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one, where, what does it mean by a volunteer event? Like, what was that regarding?
I just get the information from.
Customer appreciation.
Okay, okay, so it was like an FFA event?
No, it was a Swiderski event. They, I guess, put it out every year, right?
They pay our kids for working.
Oh, they pay our, okay, gotcha, okay.
Because I know Mr. Perisic and some of the students also do that with the VOM picnic as a fundraiser.
Okay, gotcha, okay, all right, thank you, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of accepting these, this report of donations? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Number five, closed session, consideration of a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one G of the Wisconsin statute. of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral and written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. I will be looking for a motion, please. Motion's been made by Jill. Michelle, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Abby Braun?
Yes.
Tim Adic Nelson?
Yes.
Kristen Matt Miller?
Yes.
Scott Peterson?
Yes.
Katherine Solan?
Yes.
Angie Schreiber?
Yes.
J D Schrader?
Yes.
Dr. Dave Bardo?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes, we are now in closed session.